Good evening, welcome to the Select Board Regular Meeting on today, Monday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Arrangements for remote participation by the Select Board members and members of the public are being made in accordance with Governor Baker's emergency order. This is Select Board Chair Tom Lucusa. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange?
Here.
Steven Lance?
Here.
Richard Foster?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Paul Pasterzik?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
All right. And then anticipated speakers. I believe we have Chief Dearborn with us tonight?
He is here, yes.
Great, okay. So this open meeting along Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirements of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you find posted with the agenda materials in this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as a reasonable public access is afforded. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. The Long Meadow Select Board is convening by Zoom webinar, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or QA function. For resident comment, using the Zoom webinar format of the public, our attendees and members of the public who would like to speak during the resident comment section, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will unmute you and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Members of the public who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along with the posted agenda, agenda unless I note otherwise. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that generates accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by Will Conroy. And so we will move on to our first item, which is the update on COVID nineteen. Hopefully folks have seen the Governor's order that came out recently that will change things pretty dramatically in the next, by the end of the month. So our, our report from Fire Chief John Dearborn.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you to the rest board for hosting me once again. A lot of good news today. The Governor relaxed, or is moving towards relaxing a lot of the COVID restrictions. The situation in town at the moment, we have five active cases on the color designated map, which folks probably don't look at that much anymore, but we were kind of a green island in a county here. Our numbers are trending towards us probably being undesignedated. It could be this week or the week after, as long as our cases stay down. One of the things we've spent a lot of time on is looking at our vaccination rates, and I'm really happy tonight with some fresh data that just came off the press. For our seventy-five and older, we are eighty-eight percent vaccinated. We actually believe that that number may be low because we have a lot of snowbirds that winter in Florida, and we actually would not capture that data if they were, well, the warmer climates, I should say. We would not capture that data if they were vaccinated in another state. Sixty-five to seventy-four, we're at eighty-nine percent for the community. And our total average of at least one dose for the community, taking out the zero to nineteen, nineteen age group, because they just came online, we're at seventy-two percent. So we're doing really, really well as far as vaccines go. On May twenty-ninth, the Governor will be lifting many of the restrictions. All right, I will caution everyone that the CDC mask guidelines still do require masks in certain settings. We'll provide, we, along with probably every other media outlet, will be providing a lot of data on that in the next couple of weeks. A few things that stand out, schools will still be required masking through the end of the year. Healthcare settings, so kind of care housing will still require masks for some period of time. And then the big news is on June fifteenth, the state of emergency will be lifted by the state. So there'll be a things to do list for the town. All those things will come back to you folks, and we request that you lift your emergency declaration at some point there. We've divided, divided it up into three sectors to manage the reopening. We assigned our COVID, one of our COVID coordinators to the schools, one to the town, and one to our stakeholder groups. Just assist people understanding the reopening guidances. We received a couple hundred pages of guidances today. It goes everywhere from the, all the DESI guidance for the schools to the, our private stakeholders, churches, restaurants, elderly facilities, and, and camps, which that's the next big thing on the radar. So it's been a long road. Appreciate all the support from the Select Board throughout this process, and I certainly am up and taking questions.
Yes, any questions for the chief? No, I, you know, again, it's town meeting went pretty smoothly yesterday, and, you know, we made a lot of adjustments to make sure no one got sick, and I don't think we've heard anything yet, but hopefully we'll have a report similar to the last time where there's no more cases that are a result of the town meeting. So, all right, chief, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. So next, we will have the announcements. Lynn, do you have a couple announcements?
Yes, I do. So first, just a quick recap of town meeting yesterday. We had two hundred and six registered voters attend, and a huge thank you to all of those who did attend, especially the volunteers and town staff who helped make it such a success. Though we did not have any rain, I think it would have been quite unbearable sitting in the field with the sun. So I think making them move to the DPW garage was a good idea, and the meeting went very well. We have the annual town election coming up on Tuesday, June twenty-second. In-person voting will be held at the Community House at seven thirty-five Long Meadow Street. Pools are open from seven AM to eight PM. There is, no excuse, voting by mail has been extended by state law until June thirtieth. So if you would like to vote by mail, you're able to do so, and you can download an application to vote by mail on the town website. The deadline to get a ballot would be Wednesday, June sixteenth, and contact the town clerk's office if you have any questions on that at five six five four one zero three. There is a vacancy, actually two vacancies, on the Finance Committee. Each vacancy is for a three-year term that would commence on July first, twenty twenty-one, and go through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Interested people could fill out an application available at the Select Board Office or online at longmeadow.org under the Government heading, and then click Select Board. And you can submit those applications to the Select Board Office or to the Finance. Additional information regarding the Finance Committee's roles and responsibilities can be found on the town website, or you could also submit questions to Paul Pasterzik via email or by calling five six five four one three six. For the remainder of the Boarding Committee and Commission applications, we are embarking on a reappointment and appointment process. The deadline to submit applications to serve on a Board, Committee, or Commission is Wednesday, May twenty-sixth at noon. People with terms expiring this June, which is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, that your appointment would expire, should submit an application by this deadline of May twenty-sixth. And you can email your applications to selectboard@longmeadow.org, and there's more information on the town website with a link to the application. And two other quick updates that we didn't get printed on this update document or announcement document. One is, if you know anybody that is a lifeguard or would like to serve in some sort of lifeguard capacity, we are in desperate need of lifeguards to be able to staff both pools. Currently, we only have enough staff to open one pool. We don't see a swell of applications in the next couple of weeks. It is very likely that we will only be able to open one pool. So if you know anybody that's looking for a great summer job and has lifeguard credentials, we would love you to send them our way. And this is another announcement. This is about an upcoming job opening. We anticipate posting positions for all the daycare, different roles that we will have when we reopen for the fall. And certainly, if you have anybody that you know that wants to work in a daycare or has credentials to work in a daycare, definitely keep an eye open for those job postings that should be up and available sometime in the middle of June. That concludes my updates, Tom.
Okay, thank you. And I hope that folks, you know, help find some lifeguards because it would be nice, we don't know how warm it's going to be, but it's always nice to have all the pools open. And lifeguarding tests, there's classes for being governor of lifeguard are, they're not that long. I mean, I think hopefully people can get it, you know, I don't know if it takes a week for a lifeguard. It's not like a WSI course, which I know takes a lot longer. So thank you, and I hope folks will get the word out. And next, we'd ask for any resident comments.
I do know that there's one, so I will move this individual over.
Okay, thank you. And so when you're live, just start with your, your name and your address, and then make your comment.
And that would be Pete Landon that I just moved in, so Pete, when you're ready, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry. Oh, we're getting there. Thank you. Do you hear me?
You may have more than one device on, because you've got a lot of echo.
Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Okay, let's speak up. I intended to do this yesterday, but I wanted to thank Paul Pasterzik for his service to the committees I've been part of for the last twenty years. Audit, Finance, Pension, Task Force, Tax Ceiling, Charity Review, and the list goes on. But he exhibited great stewardship for these committees, professionalism. He dealt with a ton of bonding issues, dealt with strategy on tax ceiling, and he also set up the town for recognition under government financed National Organization for Distinguished Budget Awards, and also a second award, Achievement of Excellence for Financial Reporting for our CAFR. So I didn't want to miss the opportunity because I know he's getting close to retirement. Can you hear me? Thank you.
Yes, we heard you. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other resident comments?
Don't see anybody else in the list here, but if you did want to speak, you could just use the raised hand feature.
All right, then why don't we move to Select Board comments? Are there any Select Board comments this evening?
Yeah, I have one, Tom. I'd like to thank the town manager and her staff, and for everybody else who is responsible for the logistics setup of the meeting, as I say, it couldn't go any smoother. And I agree with you, Lynn, it would have been not fun outside. It was, it was highly appropriate to have it in with the sunshine that we experienced. So kudos to you and your, your guys. I know you put a lot of work into this, especially when you're changing something in the last minute. I don't think anybody realizes how much effort goes into setting up the meeting and all the logistics involved when it's, when it's changing two days away from the, to the due date. So thank you much.
Any, any other Select Board comments? Okay, we will move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you. So I'm very excited to announce and inform you that we received a Public Health Excellence Grant. This is an application that I submitted with assistance from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to continue our efforts in sharing health services. This time, the application is with the towns of Hamden, Munson, and Wilberham, and I'm pleased to announce that it's been awarded. Long Meadow will serve as the lead community in this effort. The total grant award for the remainder of FY twenty twenty-one and all of FY twenty twenty-two is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Public Health Director Finn McCool and I will begin the hard work of pulling all the pieces of this together. At an upcoming Select Board meeting, I'll be asking the board to vote on a letter of intent for sharing services. You have to remember, communities will be working to do the same by June twenty-eighth in order to fulfill a grant requirement. The work on the shared services is exploratory, and each community needs to have their Select Board and/or Board of Health take a vote to enter into a shared services agreement when we actually get to that point. The ultimate goal of the grant is to give each community the staff and tools they need to, to create a progressive and proactive public health department. A little background on the grant, this was, this was a state-funded ten million dollar project or grant opportunity in the FY twenty-one budget. An RFR was put out in March. The state received thirty applications, twenty-nine of which were awarded totaling seven point seven million dollars. Of the twenty-nine awarded, eighteen were for the creation of a new shared health services agreement, which Long Meadow was one of. Senior signs on the green. Principal Landers, on behalf of the parent and student organizers, has requested permission to place senior signs on the green again this year. It was a widely well-received project that happened last year, and they want to bring it back for the graduating high school seniors for this year. Permission was granted, and the signs will be up after school on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, and students can come and get them before dusk on Friday, May twenty-eighth. Parks and Recreation and the pools, over the past month, we've been recruiting to fill positions in our camps and at the pools. This time, we do not have enough applications for all necessary positions to open both lists and Greenwood Pools. No final decision's been made yet. Additionally, there's a nationwide shortage on, on pool supplies, including chlorine. We are currently taking inventory of all our supplies to determine what we need and how we may or may not be impacted by that limited supply. Further update to that, since I published this, I have, I'm able to confirm that we do have enough supply, so we feel fairly confident that we will not be impacted by any chlorine this summer. But we certainly will be impacted by a shortage of staff willing to work and fill these positions in, in our pools. An update on the sewer winter averaging discussion, the, I have engaged a consultant to assist with our units utility billing modifications as a result of the Select Board discussion several weeks ago about changes to our super billing. The consultant has a lot of experience working with munis and implementing changes and upgrades for municipalities. With the turnover of a key staff person that handles utility billing at the DPW and the uncertainty about the functions of our current munis utility billing module, we need someone with the experience and deeper knowledge of munis to implement the changes accurately. The consultant is in high demand right now and is currently wrapping up munis utility billing projects for the towns of Dartmouth, Foxborough, and Mansfield, and as student schedule permits, people begin work for the town. And that is, that's all I have for our report tonight, Tom.
Okay, any questions from the Select Board on the town manager's report? Mark Gold?
I have two, Lynn. Maybe this isn't necessarily for Lynn. I read in one of the reports, the Fire Department report, that we were doing, the Fire Department does inspections upon building sale, and I was unaware of that. I'm sure many other people were, and that seems to me to be above and beyond kind of the normal fire inspection projects we do. And I liken it to some degree to the, the final water meter readings, inspections that we do for the, you know, on, on the sale of properties. And I'm just wondering aloud whether that ought not be something that's fee-based, if it's required as part of the sale, and we're sending out our firefighters independent of what they normally do, if that ought not be something we, we, we consider. So I'm not looking for a major discussion now, but it's something I think we should put on a, a burner, I think, just a back burner or front burner to bring back up if, if, if it's appropriate. The other, the other issue, I, I had the opportunity to head out of town a week or so ago, and another Select Board member did too, and we both reported that our airplanes were ridiculously crowded. I'm just wondering if we should not be going about better or re-advertising the, the passport program that's at the Park and Rec Department if people are going to start traveling later this summer. It's a very, very convenient way for people who may not have, who may have let their passports expired or expire, or may need new passports to get them. I don't know if we're prepared to renew them yet in the, in the Parks and Rec Department, but it was pretty good revenue for the town and a really good service for the community, and it's something we might want to consider doing as people really start traveling again.
Okay, any other comments? Okay.
Steve Marantz had comments, and it, I don't know if you want me to address any of what was brought up, or if you want to.
Sure. Yeah, you could talk about, like, the Fire Department. I know that, I think that's a standard thing that's come up before.
Yes, and I know Chief Dearborn is still in the meeting. I'm happy to move him into panelist again if you wanted to hear directly from him on that. But I, I can give you an update on passports. We are not currently an acceptance facility right now. We have been closed for over a year, so we do need to renew that status, and it's something that Parks and Rec Department will be doing once we get a little further into camp season, and they can spend some time there.
Okay.
And let me get.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Beck. The, the inspections that you referenced, Mark, in our report are required under state law. It's a, a smoke and CO detector inspection, they're chapter thirty-two. We charge fifty dollars per inspection, even if, and if they fail the first time, it's a second fifty dollars, and it equates about nineteen thousand dollars in revenue.
All right, thank you, chief.
Thanks.
That sounds familiar. Steve Marantz, did you have a comment?
I hope the chief stays on. I, I have two questions, one for the chief. Your report mentioned the need for firefighters and the, the lack of qualified applicants, which was a concern. Is, I mean, is there anything proactive that the department can do? I mean, this would be a worry for the entire town, and curious a bunch of further thoughts on that.
One of the roadblocks that I continue to hit is our competitiveness as far as our pay scale, frankly. There's fifty or so positions open in the firefighter paramedic field in the Lower Pioneer Valley right now, and when folks look at us, they, they look at our pay scale. Our pay scale in the zero to five or eight a year is simply about five percent lower than the rest of the region. So I'll deal with the town manager and, and coming up with a plan to close that gap. We are looking, trying to think outside of the box a little bit about, in fact, tomorrow I'm visiting a paramedic school to talk about our department. I'm really proud of our department, and we try to have a progressive work environment to bring people in, but the, it's, it's competitive nature of the workforce right now.
Thank you. Second question for Lynn. As far as the munis stuff goes, I, I get the fact that to go back and find out what winter averages are, or is, is a toll order, but quarterly billing, is that still the same toll order? Can we start quarterly billing, you know, in summertime, or is that still going to be pushed off with the consultant being hired?
It'll likely be an implementation with the consultant, mainly because we're losing one of our key staff people, and it also, I think, will line up better with the next billing cycle anyway. But it is a function that it, that is available in the current system we have now.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Well, I just, I assume that, well, if it's available, hopefully sooner as opposed to later, that would be my whole thought.
Great, any other comments? Okay, I, a couple of things. One is, I hope that our town has five percent less fires than some of the other towns we're competing against. Maybe that will make firefighters more interested. The, the other question was about, you know, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for the grant. Congratulations, Lynn, that's a pretty good return. And I just wondered if there would be need for future grant funding as we, you know, move down this path towards tying together our health departments? Do you know, do the people usually get additional funds?
So you, it makes us eligible for the two fiscal years, twenty-three and twenty-four. Each year is, you could apply for up to three hundred thousand dollars each year. So you have a potential yield of nine hundred thousand dollars over the three years. So we did receive the upward end of that grant award.
Well, that's, that's pretty good. You'd be, you, you'd be earning more than your salary, so all those kinds of throws. So thank you. The other thing is, in the reports, I, I looked at the Veterans Report, and it really was, you know, more April, but we haven't heard anything about Memorial Day. Generally, we have a ceremony on the green at, during the week along Meadow Days. Do you know if anything is going to happen for vets this year in terms of remembering folks who died in war?
I know Lena was working with some members of the Veterans Council on it. I don't know that they've decided on exactly what ceremony will happen this year.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so then we can move on to our next topic, which will be the old business, and we have to approve minutes for May third, the regular meeting. Kind of a motion to accept those minutes?
So we approve the minutes of the May third regular Select Board meeting.
Okay, and second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing done, we'll go to a vote. Mike Barbieri?
Mr. Cusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right. And the next thing is the HCRRB update and the PIRAC letter that we all received in our document. I guess we'll start with the update. I know, Lynn, we had asked you to, to look a little bit more with legal counsel about some of the things that Select Board have been talking about, like perhaps alternatives to participating in the Hamilton County Retirement Board to begin with. So I guess I'll turn it over to you or Paul, whoever.
Yes, so legal counsel is still reviewing the request from the, I think it was the May third meeting. Um, yes, so legal counsel is still reviewing the request from uh, the, I think it was the May third meeting. Uh, about our options for coming out of uh, Hampton County Retirement System. And what we may have avail, available to us, I do not have an update on that yet. Tonight, you have in front of you a draft letter that was asked to be uh, prepared and put in your packet. Um, to be issued jointly from the select board and the audit committee. Be sent to PIRAC, uh, requesting that, a status update on the. Hampton County Regional Retirement System Audit for the years covering two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty.
And hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at that letter, is there any comments about the letter, it looks like it uh. Is asking for some, the kind of information we'd be interested in knowing, in terms of any additional audits, any comments?
No, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we authorize the letter to be sent out to the select board and the audit committee.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the letter? Hearing none, we'll go to roll call vote, Mike Barbieri, will you go, take the vote?
Mister Kusza?
Yes.
Mister Strange?
Yes.
Mister Moran?
Yes.
Mister Gold?
Yes.
Mister Foster?
Yes.
Alright, we'll move on to Eversource work.
Tom, can I just have another comment about the retirement board in PIRAC, if I can?
Yeah.
There, there were some comments, and, and Lynn, I appreciate Lynn sent the letter back to the retirement board based on comments they made. There were some comments made there that, you know, there, there's, the reason it is what it is, is that nobody's interested in. In being part of the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, and, and I'd like to. Get a sense of the select board, if, you know, we'd be willing to support a, a slate of people. Who we might be able to develop, both from Long Meadow and some of the other communities, to represent that, I think that it's important that. You know, the argument that there's nobody else who wants to be part of it, and therefore the current chair. Can't resign because there's nobody to take over, we've gotta push back on that by having an alternate, an alternate slate, and I know that. You know, the, some of the folks in Hampton have talked about it, and I'd just like to know if there's a, a sense that Long Meadow would support that as well. And I'll be glad to take that back to the folks at Hampton in an informal manner, just so they can start. Finding people to potentially put as an alternate slate.
Okay, so uh, what would people, any response to Mark's?
I mean, my question is, would anybody oppose us, us putting that together?
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Question, uh, don't pose it, but in terms of, since it's Hampton County, I mean. The biggest fish in Hampton County is Springfield, has, there been any discussion with Springfield folks?
No, because they're not part of the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, if there's thirty-five organizations, Steve. You know, I could go through, I've got the list, I could go through, it's, you know, Palmer and the Palmer Fire District and see, but Springfield has their own retirement. Program, so they're not at all, are, it's kind of a misnomer if it's in Hampton County. But, but we would go to the communities and the organizations that participate with it.
Yeah, so the county, so we're dissolved uh, quite a while back, and everything became really state entities, except. There still is uh, the ghost of the counties, I would think that the largest member of that uh, retirement board. Would be the um, Sheriff's Department, which has over eight hundred employees and then all their retirees. And then in the District Attorney's Office, also is a big part of the county, so those are. You know, in that addition to smaller towns like ours, um, so, you know, we look at taking on. A step to, to leave the town tower, report Retirement Board, I'm coming here. I guess at this point, given the response that they've had to, to comments we've made and other towns have made. I would say there's nothing that would make me feel like we should feel an allegiance to staying with them. They have not tried to convince us that things have improved, I know, you know, we're sending this additional letter. Which gives them an opportunity to, you know, let us know, I mean, they're welcome to come to our, one of our select board meetings and. Make some statements, uh, if that would be helpful, but uh, so I would say, I would support you, Mark.
Well, I see this as an alternative, Tom, I think they're the parallel paths, one is we're gonna pursue what it takes for us to. To pull Long Meadow out of it, but alternatively, it's, let's reform the organization that's there. By putting in a slate of people who we think are responsive and following the guidelines and, and all that kinda stuff, and so I think. I see this as a, as a parallel path to what we've already pursued, but I think we need to do this. To address the issues that have come up that, you know, of course it's being run by the people who are running it, they have no intention of. Of leaving because nobody seems to wanna take over, and I think there are people who may wanna. Participate, I mean, Paul Pesterzic has stepped up as an interim to be part of the, their oversight group, but I think there are other people. As well that we need to do it, there's a lot of cities and towns we just need to recruit it, but before we did that, I just wanted to make sure that. That, you know, the town of Long Meadow would support that alternate, that alternate slate, if you will, of, of officers for the Hampton County. Retirement Board.
Okay, any other comments from the select board?
Yeah, I do, I just wonder, was I, I, I support Mark's some thought there, and I thank you, Mark, for your leadership on that, I, I did see that comment as well, and. Um, there's absolutely people within the retirement uh, system. Communities who would be willing to step up and, and write that, appreciate your leadership, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Alright, so we'll move on to the Eversource uh, Town Right of Way update. And we received a lot of documents about uh, uh. Telemetry cabinets and what they look like, we have some diagrams, we have some layouts of the uh. You know, the section, and um, so I guess, given that, is there. Anything else, any other questions we have regarding this um, this work that's gonna be done?
Tom, um, there are representatives from Eversource here that I can move into the panelist if you would like.
Would you guys be up for that?
Absolutely.
Okay, then why don't you do that Lynn, thank you. And if we could just have, have them introduce themselves, um, and maybe some of the same folks we had last week, or last meeting.
Hello, this is Richard Salvera from Eversource Engineering.
Alright, Richard, thank you, uh, do you have anyone else with you at this point?
Uh, Brian MacRae, Lead Engineer out of Springfield, Mass.
Okay, great, thank you. For joining us, and um, so, I guess, you know, you guys have talked about this last week, um. So I did have, we'll start with, see what the board has some questions, and then um. Unless you had something you wanted to present first before we opened the questions.
No, I think uh, you have all of the materials, um, that we've sent over, um, so yeah, certainly we can take questions.
Okay, Richard, thank you, so we will start, Steve Moran's had a question.
Uh, I have, I have several questions, so uh, please bear with me, um. One of your statements on your bullet points is you're uh, purging the new main into service. So you're putting a new main in, is the old main going someplace, I don't quite understand why there's a new main.
Um, let's see, could you help me understand? Which bullet point that's referencing?
On your, it's on your first page, I think if you, if you go down count it's number eleven.
I just wanna make sure.
It's on the project overview document.
Construction details, third from the bottom. Or fourth from the bottom.
Yeah, um, I apologize for that, that's um, slightly misleading, I mean, there will be. Pipes that will be purged into service related to this work, there, there are gas lines leading from. The existing regulator station into the cabinet that will require purging, um, however. I would hesitate to call them mains, they're more, what we would refer to as sensing lines. Um, and so I apologize for that uh, mischaracterization on, on the memo. Um, but you are correct that a, a, a small amount of purging would occur related to this work.
And you, you do mention talking about new lines, uh, you have the old line, new line. Uh, I thought this was basically, we have a line coming in, we're gonna drop this thing down, so we can then censor what's going on. Um, but you're talking about new lines going in here, is that correct?
Correct, it's, it's all new, and, and yes, I, I, I do apologize for any confusion that some of that wording. May have resulted in, there are no abandoned lines as, you know, related to these cabinets, it's, it's only new lines going in. They lead from the station, you know, maybe five to ten feet into the cabinet itself, they're, they're um, all one inch lines.
So the old line is still gonna be in service but not going into the cabinet?
Correct, yes, there are, there are old lines that are out there currently, um, related to the regulator station. Um, and they will remain as they are today, however, there will be new lines added.
Uh, okay.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna do Eversource's work for them, but I, I've done this and I know what it is, they're actually, they're called taps, and they tap into the main. What you think of as the sort, the, the gas main, and they bring that pressure from the main to these sensors, they, they're saying they're. One inch lines, sometimes they're tubing rather than lines, and so. Eversource and the gas companies call those mains, even though most people would call them small pressure taps off the main line. I assume that that's correct, is what I'm interpreting that?
It is correct.
Couple other questions, although, um, I got, the new line, old line, what's being tapped into, I, I'll. I'll go with the phone ad, um, a question in terms of, you're testing these things to a hundred and fifty to two hundred PSI. Uh, we were, we heard at an old meeting with Columbia Gas back in the day, that this was a sixty PSI pipe. Going down, or, and that may or may not be correct, that's what we were told in one of these meetings, if that's the case, why are we testing to? One fifty to two hundred PSI?
Sure, um, so, it, it is a code requirement for the lines to be air tested. Before they are put into service and before gas is introduced into the lines, and it, it's also a code requirement to test the lines. At one point five times the maximum pressure that that line will ever see, um, so. That's kinda, that's why it's tested at a higher pressure than what you would uh, expect it to operate. It's really to ensure that.
It's more than a sixty PSI line to begin with, that if we're going to two hundred PSI, at one point five times, it's maximum pressure. We need to make this connection.
Uh, generally, we, we, we test our lines to operate. Um, as high as possible, and generally, we do test them to operate at ninety-nine pounds. Um, the, the systems that operate, that feed these regulator stations, operate at sixty pounds, and so, yes, we do test at a higher level. Um, partly for, for um, safety reasons, you know, the, the higher you test the, the pipe, the more confident you are that. It is, it is gas tight, and so that's, that's generally why we test at those high levels.
Gotcha, and it's, testing is gonna be with air and not water?
Correct, it's tested with air, or in some cases, it may be tested with nitrogen.
Uh, and that, and that's, you're able to determine the leak?
Yes, yes, the crews will attach um, either a gauge or a pressure recording chart. And they'll be able to um, register a pressure drop if there is a leak in the line. Um, and only when we receive a, a successful test, in other words, the, the pressure does not drop. Will we uh, you know, take the, take the pipe and purge gas into it.
Okay, and last question, one of the, one of your statements is, whenever there's gas stuff going on with the pipes. It's under direct supervision of Eversource personnel. Uh, is that, is that the same as having a professional engineer say, this is, this meets our safety requirements? Is that, is that Eversource supervisor the same as the professional engineer saying? This is safe as far as we are concerned about residents along Meadow having this piping in?
Um, in this case, it's not the same, the, the professional engineer reviews the plans. Um, ensures that the materials are adequate, and that the design meets um, state, federal, and company standards. The inspectors that we have in the field are not professional engineers, but they are operator qualified. To inspect this sort of work, and, and they are tested regularly to, to ensure that they're competent. To inspect this, this sort of a project.
And then, I'll just follow up there, so the professional engineer, I assume, is this, is this because it's projects too small, and there would be some projects where a professional engineer. Would have to sign off on it?
Um, in this case, we are, all of our plans, regardless of size, are being uh, signed off on. By a professional engine, engineer, and these are no exception.
But not in the field?
Uh, but not in the field, only the proposed plans will be um, certified.
And just to jump in there a little bit, they, some PEs do go out in the field as work is being done, so especially like this uh, kind of more technical work. He'll, he will probably go out to see the installation of one of these, at least.
Right, but if it's a small, I know I added a gas service to my house and.
Yeah, he's not coming out for, yeah.
And we tested it to make sure that there was no leaks before they would put any gas there, and, and as long as the person's. Uh, the person who installed it had to be licensed, and then the tester had to make sure it, it reached all the pressure requirements, and so. All the folks who'll be installing any pipelines here are all licensed personnel, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, all have operator qualifications, so we go through the state to get them all qualified to what they're, what, the task they're doing that day. Or for, for their career.
Alright, um, any other questions, Mr. Mark Gold?
Hey, so, uh, Ryan and Richard, I wanna thank you for presenting what you did, sending it to us, I was pretty critical. Two weeks ago with the paucity of what we got, and I think this is far more complete, it certainly gives me a, a better sense of what you're doing. If I could offer one critical suggestion or, or constructive suggestion, it would be in that document that's called a. A project overview, add a section about safety precautions or safety actions, those are particularly important to the. To town of Long Meadow, and if you do this in the future, I'd ask that you do that, so we understand what particular precautions you're taking. The safety of our residents, but other than that, I, I appreciate what you provided us, and it answers all my questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mark, any other questions regarding the, the work that's gonna be done? Most work? Okay, um, well, then I, I appreciate you, you coming, I don't think, you know, we don't vote on this, this is a. You know, the town manager told us that this work that's uh, just been scheduled, but we appreciate you giving us the head up on, heads up on it. Lynn, is there anything else that you had in mind, um, before we end the discussion?
Uh, no, I mean, not necessarily unless you'd like me to provide an update on what you had asked me to look at. The last meeting with town council and, and referral of this to the planning board, if you wanted me to explain that.
Of course, thank you.
Sure, so, at your last meeting, you did ask um, whether or not this could be vetted by the planning board, I did follow up with town council on that. And uh, they said that uh, planning board would not have authority here, there was no permit being applied for, so this is. Not a matter that would go in front of the planning board, uh, this is by right work, and Eversource just needs to put us on notice of it. Uh, and you could certainly ask questions about it, but other than that, uh, it did not need uh, select board or planning board approval.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll close this discussion, we'd like to thank for our representatives from Eversource. For joining us and sending us this information, and uh, I guess we'll, we'll see the project, what's the date to start on this project?
Should be early September.
Uh, I just have a question, Lynn, you said this is by right, but don't we have the authority to. Require the things that the DPW put in their letters, and how do we impose that on Eversource? I mean, I, they have the right to do it, we can't turn them down, but we can certainly make the work, or request that they do the work based on the, the. Constrains put forward by the DPW, can't we?
Uh, cor- correct, yes, uh, there is the memo that DPW issued with the requirements that they would like, uh, and I believe that Eversource did commit. At the last meeting to to comply with those um items in the memo.
So so that would, so it wouldn't be unusual for this to come before the select board to make sure that they're. Gonna make the D P W requirements, so so this will probably happen in the future. Alright, alright, thank you Lynn, um and then we can move on to new business. Um you know, there's the five of us on the board are just, I'm sure we're all computer wizards. Uh but we're still gonna have someone with us tonight who could probably um type circles around us and. Do program us into oblivion, Nick George, the director of technology, uh is Nick with us yet?
Yes, he is, I'm just moving him now.
Okay, so um most of the members, I imagine everyone on the board has gotten some uh reminders to do some cyber. Security um training so that we don't make any mistakes and and compromise uh the um integrity of our. Internet system for the town and the um and so I'd like to Nick to talk a little bit about cybersecurity. And the uh the what he's been doing and currently and then what he's to do in the future perhaps. And then move into a discussion about municipal broadband, because there are towns around us who are putting that on the table. Uh is looking at municipal broadband as a utility that the town could offer wifi. Um through members, we do have a a tower in town by the town's courts and if we. You know, we would need to know a little bit more about that and we might as well start with talking to you, Nick, about it. Um maybe you could just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about um. How long you've been with the town and and a little bit about your operations and then if you'd go into talking about cybersecurity?
Sure, uh thank you all for having me, uh Nick George, I T director for schools in town. Uh I've been with the town since uh summer twenty fifteen. Um so uh we run a department uh physically housed within the uh high school and provide. I T support for a help desk and network operations and infrastructure planning. Uh for all of the schools and all of the town departments. Um so uh cybersecurity has definitely been something we've been heavily focused on. Uh increasingly, uh and it's been helpful, I'd say that it's gained uh more attention. Um there's been obviously a lot of coverage in the news recently about some very high profile targets and these were things that. Had always been on security minded uh people's minds, but as kind of hypothetical attacks and we're now seeing them play out as a. Networks have gotten more complex and our dependence on technology has become higher, uh you're seeing, you know, bad actors taking advantage of. Uh bad network practices or bad user education to cause disruption and uh. Thanks to anonymous currency, it's a money making business, um so it's doesn't seem like this is going to go away. So the bar is continually being raised higher for what we need to do to protect ourselves and our operations. Um and I actually sent out an email to this uh select board uh end of March just to kind of outline our current state of preparedness. And have a couple of things to update on progress basis then even, um but if you'd like, I can kind of speak in uh broad terms. And cover some of the stuff that we uh talked about in that email, um would that be an okay way to proceed?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Very good, so um I kind of outlined that I thought there were two responsibilities for an organization that is trying to be. Uh proactive in their defense against the current situation and one is to prevent the likelihood of a successful attack from occurring. And then the other one is to, in the possibility of an attack happening, be prepared to recover from such an attack. Uh because the nature of a lot of these attacks now, they're they're most commonly uh are ransomware attacks. And malicious actors get into a network, uh they often do this undetected and they can do this for. Days or weeks and perform reconnaissance, gain an understanding of the network, try to increase and move laterally within the network. And uh prepare for an attack and the attack is encrypting your data so you lose access to it. And then holding the organization ransom for payment because the organization isn't able to recover from that. So the way we defend against that is proactive measures to prevent such an attack from occurring. Or if an attack occurs, you wanna be able to restore from backup, because that isn't going to be a situation then where you have to even consider the possibility of paying ransomware. If you know you have good uh backups that are tested in good order, protected from ransomware attacker. And are covering the data that you needed to cover, so we've really ramped up over the last few years, the uh. Redundancies in our backup strategy, uh we always had backups in place, but as there's become greater awareness on it, greater buy-in, it's been easier sell too. To make the case for why we need to have more backups in more places that are more resilient. And I should say, uh we were pleased to uh see that our capital request for a backup project was approved uh yesterday at town meeting. Um that's a, it really was a home run uh proposal because it's going to reduce our five year cost compared to our current backup system. And also provide us a much quicker time to restore uh than we have now, so that was good to see. Um so in the prevention category, uh we have network segmentation which has been an ongoing effort. Our network is more highly segmented than it's ever been and we're continuing to segment it further. And what that means is that we are separating out different physical areas and different categories of users into different network segments so we can. Put rules between those segments to only allow the kind of traffic that we want through and between those uh segments. Uh the reason you do that is if a attacker gets a foothold on your network, you wanna limit the scope of what they're able to access and the scope of what they're able to affect. Um that's going on in many cases behind the scenes, most people don't notice them unless. Sometimes we put restrictions in that are too tight, because that's where we tend to err, and then if we hear from someone that a legitimate use. Is being blocked, then we can look at loosening or allowing additional traffic, um it is a complicated process to segment a network. When people are operating on it, you know, we have a network that is more highly used than ever. And we're putting segmentation in place, so it is challenging, but we've made good progress in that area, usually goes unnoticed. What we'll be seeing over the next couple of months that will be noticed by users is kind of the last and most user facing. Uh example of that segmentation, that will be in the wifi network and how it's authenticated and how people connect to it. So there's still more work to do there, uh but a lot has happened behind the scenes, including uh segmenting our backups. Uh highly from the uh primary network so that if an attacker were to gain access to the network. They wouldn't be able to gain access readily to our backup platform, because that is something you see in organizations that fall victim to ransomware attack. If they were doing, I I said in the email too, you have to get everything right all the time, an attacker only has to get it right once to get a foothold. Potentially, so you sometimes see from an organization, they were hit by ransomware, oh, that's too bad, they weren't able to prevent it. Well, they have backups, that's good, some organizations aren't even that far, but their backups were inadequately segmented and the ransomware attacker was able to gain access to them and compromise them. So we've taken a lot of effort to segment our backups so that that's not possible. Um the other thing that we've done is increased the number and diversity of backups that we maintain. So in addition to having onsite backups that occur in the server room where the servers are housed. We have additional onsite backups that are stored in a different physical location in town and then we have offsite backups stored with vendors. For our financial system and other critical systems, and so what that protects against, in addition to the cybersecurity threat. Is kind of the more traditional defenses people were defending against, like a natural disaster, private hits the building, your servers go offline. You want your backups to be in a physically different location so that they're resilient to that. Um as you've seen in the emails I've sent out, we also to continue to participate in the state grant for cybersecurity training. We have a pretty high participation rate on that, I haven't looked at the numbers most recently, um but we get good feedback from our users that they found that helpful. Sometimes they find it annoying, which is understandable, um but a nice part of the cybersecurity training is that it also involves sending out testing phishing emails. So even if people uh choose not to participate or ignore the training, uh you catch them if they click on a false phishing email. And that gets logged and we can follow up with them and they'll get a notice as well that they uh fell for phishing tests, so. It has been increasing awareness and we've seen it in our users' behavior because when a scam does go out. Uh we get it reported by our users to our help desk, they're detecting these things, they're uh more knowledgeable about what these scams look like. And it seems to be working pretty well, so we're happy to continue to participate in that state grant. Um then there's just some good housekeeping stuff we do, we patch our systems regularly, we're installing software updates that address security flaws when vendors. Uh discover security flaws and disclose them and release updates, uh we have anti malware and ransomware detection software. Installed on all of our town window systems and uh servers, um we have tightened up our firewall rules. Uh we've limited the amount of services that we expose publicly on the internet, uh since the email that I sent to the select board in March. Uh I made reference to migrating our student information system from an onsite hosted platform to offsite. Uh we did complete that uh last month, uh which means that we are no longer exposing an internal system publicly on the internet. Uh in that case, and it was actually our last publicly exposed system, so we were able to close down that entry point into the network. Um and we're continuing to uh review firewall rules and tighten things up and reduce uh inter- inter network communication wherever it makes sense to do so.
Um Nick, I I I hate to hold you up, but you've covered a lot of material, I just, I just wanna ask a couple of the. Board members to just summarize what you've said, if you could just hold on a second, well, no, that wouldn't be fair. But um I I do appreciate all the information you've given us and uh I know that the. The trainings, the cybersecurity training are the only computer trainings that I regularly am involved in and I appreciate uh. What I'm learning there, I think it's very valuable, um and I'm I'm glad when I can find the time to do them, because they do take a little. A chunk of time, I don't know if anyone from the board has any questions at this point about our cybersecurity, it sounds like you've really given us a. Uh a great overview of what's been going on and what our goals are and 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 I'm glad you tied it into town meeting. And how the funding uh is gonna make a big difference to make the town safer from cybersecurity threats. Um are there any questions from board members? Nick, that means you did a good job.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to bury you in information, but always happy to have this conversation, I do appreciate the interest, so if anyone ever has a question or feedback or input. Please feel free to let me know, it's uh important, it's on top of our minds, I'm glad that it was on top of the select board's minds as well.
Yeah, and.
What about, what about the broadband discussion?
Oh, we'll go to that next, yeah, uh but I, just before we do, I just wanna say that anytime I've had to deal with the uh help desk. Uh they've just been very helpful and quick and, you know, I'm just.
Yeah, we're lucky to have a very good crew there, so thank you for that feedback and I'll pass it along.
Good, good, so now the cybersecurity and um so hopefully you understand. A little bit about how other towns might see this as a sort of a utility, having wifi that they could. Um you know, residents would pay for instead of going through cable companies. Uh I I believe that's the impression, right, and Nick, what's your impression of, cause you've, have you read anything about this?
Yeah, uh actually, I recently took a look at Wilbraham's uh municipal broadband uh plan. Uh they did an early uh study, uh they partnered with a network operator to take a look at the feasibility of such a rollout and. I thought it was a useful document to review a lot of the things that I had kind of assumed just from my own knowledge and research over the years were confirmed. Uh it was nice to see that confirmed in a formal report from people who have been through this with other uh communities. Um and that's available on their website, so uh if anyone's interested in seeing what their analysis of that feasibility looks like, I I found it a very useful report.
Oh, good, thank you, um does the board have any questions, Mark all, let's see you ready or.
Uh I I don't have any questions, I, Tom, I just have to confess that that. Based on some requests we made quite some time ago, I sent a note to our cable advisory committee, cause we had asked them. To look into this and I say, you know, my question was, have you looked, have you done anything and are you ready to make a report? To the select board and I got back, you know, five paragraphs from Dr. Wolman, who's the chair of the the uh. Of of the cable advisory committee, basically saying they're working on a cable, you know, renewal contract, but they have looked into. Into broadband, then rather than go into the details of what he answered, that I think it may be worthwhile sharing that with the. Entire select board or having the cable advisory committee come in and do that as well, they apparently took a very, very thorough look. At broadband, including speaking to the Whip City group in Westfield who's doing it and to the Greenfield. Municipal internet system was done, so they've they've gone through and 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 done a done a lot of work, even talked to some potential vendors, so. I think it may be worth it, you know, and Nick, I don't know if they've followed up with you or they they've spoken to you, but they probably. ought to, so we get everybody on on the same page, you know, I'm 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 not gonna give their report form, I'd rather. They give their report for themselves, but they they haven't been sitting on their hands for the last six months.
Yeah, well, Mark, they are on a future agenda, um they will be making a report to the select board, so uh I think we gave them. Till the end of June, is that right, Lynn?
Yes.
Yeah, the end of June, so um but you know, I guess that's a good question, you know, Nick, did. Did that cable advisory committee consult with you at all about, you know, some of the logistics in terms of our town system that we already have?
Uh no, not unless I perhaps missed an email communication, but I had from, no.
Okay, and so if there was a broadband system, would it be totally separate from uh the work you do? Or would it be merged in any way?
Well, uh there might be opportunities to make use of the existing fiber ring in town to uh help with some of the fiber rollout to communities. Uh but I imagine it would be operated as a separate entity, uh as probably a utility operated by a municipal light plant perhaps or. Um it's also possible, you don't need a municipal light plant as a community if you're going to just build up the network and then have it operated by a different network operator. Um but it probably would not be something that we would be involved in the day to day operations, I don't think.
Okay, yeah, okay, and um and would there be any. Concern that um you know, this operation would interfere with what you do?
No, I don't think so, uh if there were opportunities to make use of the existing fiber, it would almost certainly be over unused strands. Uh so there wouldn't actually be any overlap between the municipal broadband network and the uh internal networks that we use to communicate between buildings. Uh the only overlap might be if we were to become a customer of that municipal light uh for our internet connection, for example. Uh but then they would be taking the place of our internet provider that we use today.
Okay, alright, um do we have any other questions from the board? Yes, Mark Strange, yeah.
Thanks, Tom, hey, Nick, so um I uh, you know, in Agawam, we're 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 doing a pretty deep dive on this. Looking at uh all the options available um for for Agawam. And um you know, it's it's a, it's it's a pretty complicated um process. Yeah, with a lot of different options and um a lot of different uh players involved, so I just wanted to offer um anybody. Has questions from the cable commission or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to share what what information that we've uncovered.
Oh, very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions for the board? Okay, well, Nick, again, uh thank you for coming in and and uh, you know, we we definitely get your emails. Uh or, you know, I know your work is reaching us and uh and you know, you've been a big, a big help over the years. Um that you've been here five years, you know, going, so hopefully you like it, um and we appreciate you uh joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Alright, so the next item on the agenda is a middle school facilities conditions assessment. And we have the superintendent Marty O'Shea who's gonna be joining us and it, we have two documents, the first one. Is an inventory of identified needs and it it looks at both the middle schools, um Glendalken Williams. And does a great breakdown and then it, the second document is the school committee's presentation. Which looks at a lot of the numbers that were in the first document and um so we have superintendent Marty O'Shea with us.
I am here, uh Lynn, I don't know if I have to be in presentation mode, I'm happy to.
Great.
To go.
Yep, you should be good.
Alright, well, thank you, everybody, I'll uh I'll try to be super respectful of your time, I know you had a a long day yesterday and uh this is. Really just a my first opportunity to talk to you about some of the um the needs of our middle schools that have been. Um recently sort of reaffirmed and reidentified, um the way I've I've talked about. Uh our middle schools uh is that we, I think as a community, we sit at a crossroads where. I think we have some important decisions to make about the, you know, these facilities and protecting the assets or. Uh deciding what would be the most sort of cost effective way to ensure that kids have. A facility that will will meet their needs and this community will have a facility that meets its needs uh for decades to come and so. Pleased to provide to you a a report that the school committee commissioned, a facilities. Condition assessment report and and the report uh gives us some some fresh information and I think will help us. uh, gives us some, some fresh information and I think will help us, you know, make some important decisions going forward. But I'd say that um, more than anything, the report confirms that we have two middle schools whose needs can't be uh, cannot be addressed through uh, typical maintenance or even the type of uh, normal capital expenditures that this community is willing to get behind. Um, I think the needs of the two schools go beyond, um, at this point, they go beyond what, what can typically be provided. And so we felt like it was important to um, engage the services of uh, Colliers International to give us a sort of a fresh look at our middle schools. You, you may recall that in 2015, a firm um, called J C J had refreshed um, a 2007 report on our middle schools. And so the, the details of the report were provided to you in terms of the the list of identified projects. And we also uh, provided you with the um, the slide deck that the um, that Colliers had presented to the school committee uh, a few weeks back. And so Colliers uh, did a few things for us. They, first of all, they identified priori, identified and prioritized uh, maintenance and repair projects. And so you'll see a list of those projects in your packet. I think there were uh, around 200 identified projects. And so they uh, also um, did the best to estimate the costs associated with uh, those sort of standard maintenance and repair projects. And so that was sort of one of the services that, that Colliers um, provided to us. So they also uh, did what I would describe as sort of a conceptual estimate of the cost of uh, replacing our two middle schools if we were to build two new facilities and then the costs associated with building a single new middle school. And uh, to Colliers' credit, um, the, it's an experienced firm. It's a large firm. They've done a lot of work with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They went in and they um, used a, a form that uh, the MSBA uses called the 3011 form. And, and they use that form to crunch uh, the cost, the potential costs of, of building uh, new middle schools. And so uh, in your, in your slide deck, and I don't know if we want to pull that up or um, is it uh, available? If, if not, that's okay.
Yeah, I can. Just give me just a minute. I will find it.
And, and so they um, they identified those sort of maintenance and repair projects and then also um, the, the costs associated with um, you know, if we were to construct two new middle schools or a single new middle school. And I won't go through um, you know, all the, the, the nuts and bolts of the presentation, but um, I think it is important to kind of use that to give us some perspective, at least conceptually on, on the, the status of our two middle schools. And to back up just a little bit while Lynn's pulling up the, the slide deck, um, it was important to get this fresh information on the middle schools. And Lynn, if you can, if you can go to um, I think it's slide four, you can just that's the one there. So this at a, at a very high level uh, identifies the um, and, and quantifies the maintenance and repair projects that uh, Colliers had identified. And you'll see that they identified about $30 million in uh, prioritize maintenance and repair costs to both Williams Middle School and Glenbrook. And so um, this new information is information that we want to use to submit to the MSBA. Uh, the school committee has authorized us to prepare new statements of interest uh, for the MSBA to uh, work with the MSBA to sort of identify some potential solutions, to partner with the MSBA on some potential solutions that are educationally effective, cost-effective, that address the needs of our two middle schools. And so this is um, sort of the, what I call almost the basic maintenance and repair projects that they identified. And it's important to note that with, if we were to complete the repairs that are identified in this slide, it really would restore the buildings back to their original working condition. And I say that because this would not be the costs associated with bringing the buildings up to a condition where they're really suitable for 21st century teaching and learning. And so uh, there is a slide in there, Lynn, uh, that has two columns showing what the maintenance and repair would provide and, and what it would not. Go down one more, another one. There it is. Um, back one. Can pull it back one more slide, Lynn. There it is. And so you'll see what this essentially is telling us in their view and Colliers' view, what the, what the $30 million would uh, address and, and what would be excluded from those maintenance and repair projects. So you see on the left, it would address some um, some significant needs of the two buildings, but it would not deal with the basic um, footprints that were locked into. It would not deal with the fact that we have classrooms that are running 2021 programs in spaces that were designed for middle school students in 1965. Um, it wouldn't deal with the, with the libraries. It wouldn't deal with the fact that we have, you know, essentially two middle schools with two very different footprints that are not really purposed for what we really would want them to provide to students and families today. And so the next slide, uh, we can take it one more, Lynn. Thank you. Uh, the next slide identifies the um, the costs of those maintenance repairs that I just talked about stacked up against the costs associated with uh, constructing two new middle schools and the costs of constructing a combined middle school. The white uh, portion of the bar graph in the, in the two columns on the, on the right represent our best estimate. Again, this is sort of conceptual at this point. Uh, our best estimate of the um, of the uh, participation of the state, the MSBA grant uh, that we would potentially be able to access if we submitted a successful statement of interest. And so, you know, really you're looking at, uh, and Lynn, I don't know if they can see the bottom of that slide, if we can just pull it up just a little bit. You know, the, the costs of those uh, the, the maintenance, the 200 maintenance and repair projects they identified against the costs of, of new construction. And when you factor out the MSBA reimbursement, you get a better idea of what the ultimate cost to the towns would be. And again, this is, is really um, these are our numbers, obviously, that, that would change if we were invited into the project in the sense that they would evolve and be refined, but they, they do help us understand what might be the best path forward. And so with this new information, the, the school committee has authorized us to prepare two new statements of interest for Glenbrook and Williams. And the uh, requirement is that those statements of interest uh, be approved by the school committee. And but uh, part of the reason that we're here tonight is just to give you the latest and greatest information that we have. But also to let you know that our intention would, I've talked to Lynn about this, if it, if it fits your schedule to come back to you in early June with the completed statements of interest for your review and approval. And so we thought it was important to get you um, this, this detailed information as early as possible so that, that you'd be in a position to make an informed decision. And if we were to, you know, we have, we're now at our fifth year in a row, I think it is, fourth or fifth year in a row of submitting statements of interest on our, on the two middle schools to the MSBA. Most communities have found that you have to knock on the door of the MSBA repeatedly before you finally get their attention and before you're finally invited into uh, the eligibility period until you have an opportunity to partner with them on the needs of the two schools. So we think that our project, our needs rather, are really starting to get the attention of the MSBA. Our hope would be that the SOIs that we submit in June of 21 would be favorably reviewed in December of 21 and that we would be invited into uh, to work with the MSBA and invited into that eligibility period to, to address the needs of the two middle schools. Um, it's a long drawn-out timeline. We've already been at it five years in terms of asking, you know, submitting statements of interest to the MSBA. But even if we were successful and if we, you know, did receive an invitation from the MSBA, there's still a series of milestones that, that are in front of us in terms of ultimately addressing the needs of the middle schools in the way that this community decides makes sense in the way that is most cost-effective and, and the ways that make sense for our kids. The final slide uh, shows a, an estimate of, of that potential timeline. If you, if you're able to go to slide nine, I think it is, Lynn. Uh, uh, one more, I guess it is. I hope, there it is. So this is a really just a, an estimate of the, of the timeline uh, of what we might be looking at uh, if we were to submit in the spring. And if the MSBA did favorably review our statements of interest uh, in April, uh, in December of 21. So it's a, it's, it's a long road in front of us, but as you can see from the facilities condition assessment report, there's a, you know, there, the projects are mounting up. I think Nick Turgantus is here with us today and, and I, I know that Nick i- is become incredibly familiar with the needs of these two schools and, and can speak to the uh, the systemic problems, you know, more um, more easily than I can. So um, appreciate your time. I'd love to answer any questions that you have or, or take any feedback back to the school committee that you find to be important.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Do we have any questions from the select board? I start with Mark.
Superintendent, thanks so much for that presentation. It, it is very, very helpful. I, so I, I just had a three or four comments I put down. One is that at, at some point, we end up starting to have to, have to put good money after bad. And I'm going to be pretty blunt here. In terms of we gotta do repairs in the buildings that we don't even want to keep. And so the question is, when do you, at what point does the town not put good money after bad, but rather, you know, decides to, to really take this whole thing on and, 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 and make it goo- good money after good? Example I'll use is when we had to repair the roof of the old Longmont High School, we were still paying on that roof after the high school got torn down. And that's, that's a shame for the town to do that. So I think we need to look at hence it is, but I think we're going to be very shortly being told things we have to do. And it'd be a shame to put money into the buildings that are, either the buildings are going to go away, the money use is going to go away. And I want to be aware of that. The other thing I comment is, is that, that I know that you said that repairing, you know, the $30 million option, I'll use that. That of repairing these buildings as they are gives you, you know, 1962 building on one end and a 1957 building on the other which isn't necessarily 21st century. But does the state not reimburse at a higher percentage for maintenance, overhauls? And is that $30 million on apples-to-apples comparison with the $93 million new total if in fact there's state reimbursement available? I guess what I don't know, Dr. is, is that maintenance request a separate pool from the MSBA? And is it something that the school committee, that the town might want to consider to prevent that good money after bad scenario that I was explaining?
And uh, I definitely would defer to Nick on the, the good money after bad. In fact, we had a comparable conversation today when we, we were talking about the roofs as an example. But in answering your question about the, the reimbursability of the maintenance and repair uh, uh, portion, it really, the reason there's a sort of a, there was a question mark in the slide deck is because it depends on how you go about it. The MSBA does have some um, targeted assistance, some targeted grants that they can provide for the replacement of roofs, windows, boilers, that kind of thing. If they're age-eligible and the age eligibility requirements are, are fairly high in some cases. So you could get the targeted assistance. The other, the other way you could perhaps get some assistance from the MSBA would be if you sort of um, packaged up a lot of those maintenance and repair projects as, as a single uh, renovation project. But my sense is that the MSBA also doesn't want to put good money into bad, that they want to uh, create solutions that last decades. They, they wouldn't want to uh, necessarily partner on sort of bare-bones maintenance and repair projects that don't result in a, in a, in a school building that makes sense for the 21st century. So the short answer to your question is it really depends on how you go about addressing those specific maintenance and repair projects. There would be, if you did it right, there, in fairness, there would be some MSBA eligibility. But again, you, you'd probably wind up doing it sort of um, with those targeted projects or in a way that isn't really comprehensive.
And I just think, thank you. That's a great, I appreciate that. But, you know, I, my personal opinion would be give this next round a shot, but if once again we're deferred, we may think, you know, we may want to think again at this alternative of repairs. I mean, because you can't go on forever. I was on the capital planning committee. I personally approve the replacement of all the windows, the roof and a lot of stuff in Longmont High School just to watch that stuff all go away before the, the justification period disappeared. The other comment I would have, and I think I can say this, the select board, that this school committee may not be able to, but it's the one versus two schools issue. You know, if you go to one school, you know, it's, it's $10 million more for the capital, for the capital requ- or, excuse me, it's $10 million less for the capital request, primary to town, $49 million versus $59 million. There's also a substantial operational savings. I would assume we'd only have one administration system, you know, all, you know, far less kept, whatever the staff is. And, and somehow, at some point, that needs to be part of the, of, of the decision. I I think one of the things that concerns me is that, you know, we still have the issue in town and, and I recognize the politics of the local middle schools versus a, a central school and how difficult it is for the school committee to come to grips with it. But at some point, we need to make a decision, are we going after one school or two schools? And, and that might help move forward the, you know, the involvement of the MSBA, who's right now looking at his poten- potentially looking at, they don't even know what they want to do. So why should we step in there and, and you know, that just lengthens the process of stopping the problem. I think at some point, we need to decide one versus two schools and move forward. That's for me been a, a long time hanging up, but I appreciate the data. It's great data. I think it proves the what you've been saying for years that the buildings are, you know, 1955, you know, it's, it's a 60, 65-year-old buildings that were, you've got kids in now or, or longer. Thank you for the work.
Okay, um, I just wanted to ask a question. Um, now, you know, we've looked at Colliers has gone through this and you know, Colliers is in the business of building new buildings and, and as a person who is sentimental about older buildings, um, is there any organization, is there any you know, architects or so, you know, who look at schools and repurpose them? You know, a lot of universities and colleges have older buildings on their campus. And they, they update them. They take those old buildings and they make them, you know, viable for the 21st century. Now, not all buildings can be, that can be done with. But is there any group that could give us another look, you know, other than Colliers, a group that might know how to, they might say, gee, you know, you can do something with Williams, but you can't do anything with Glenbrook or vice versa. Is there um, is there even a resource like that for refurbishing schools?
Yeah, and certainly that was the choice, I think, that, that Longmont made with Center School, right? I mean, that's, that's a, a classic, you know, um, architecturally stylish building that, that the community has regularly reinvested in to preserve that, preserve that quality of the building. We have not um, contemplated that for Glenbrook and Williams, but you know, certainly that is feedback that I could bring back to the school committee. I think, you know, when you look at, when you look at Williams in particular, it's kind of that old industrial era design and, and you know, it, it doesn't have that, um, that sort of classic uh, New England and and, you know, it it doesn't have that um, that sort of classic uh, New England facade that that perhaps some of the other earlier uh, schools might. But but that's definitely some feedback I could bring back to the school committee.
That's that's, I'm really glad with your response because yes, Center School is over hundred years old, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure of the age, but
Yeah.
Beautiful building.
It's been a long time and
Yeah.
So um, yeah, that would be one thing. And yeah, it's too bad that we can't get a figure on how much they would give us if we did, if we, you know, did refurbishment and then needed repair money. And um, it would be nice to see that because um, you know, it's gonna be a big bite. I guess the other question in terms of this um, presentation, I would turn it over to our CFO, Paul Besterzak. And when you look at the timeline here, Paul, of how things would be processed, I know you've said in the past that there's certain uh, debts that we wanna get out from under, like the school, the cost of the school, and how does this timeline work for us in terms of you know, keeping things affordable for residents in town?
Actually, the timeline would work pretty well if we got a, if we got things going in a fairly short period of time. We have a big uh, drop in our debt service, uh, excludable debt service uh, that takes place in FY two thousand and twenty-seven that we would structure something, even if it was a little bit before, and we would structure some late payments in a couple of years prior. And then enough why two thousand and twenty-seven, we would really in influx everything so we maintained a certain level. Um, and then that would carry forward for 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 mi- uh, many years. Um, and I'm sure that that don't have a complete history in front of me, but I would have to believe that there are other things that are dropping off our excludable debt thereafter in two thousand thirties and so on and so forth. So two thousand twenty-seven is the prime time to get a borrowing in.
Great. And and I I know it's a short timer. You have a lot of things to do. You've been cleaning your office out, but hopefully you could leave some notes on this for the person who takes over for you. Because I'd probably be asking the same question to them.
There, there, there is a schedule. I'm pretty, I'm already prepared in uh, in the files here, so they're readily available.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
Any questions from other members of the board? Mr. Brance.
Yes, just a question, Dr. Ashen, in terms of the SOI you wanna bring to us and to the the state. I I'm not, is that for all three possibilities? I'm not, I'm confused about what the SOI is.
Yeah, so, uh, appreciate the question. The um, the purpose of the SOIs is really just to define the need and uh, you know, the state receives dozens and dozens of applications from districts every year and a very small number frankly are identified or invited into the process. So with the SOI, you're simply describing that the condition. And but we also have in previous SOIs told the MSBA that we would want to use this process as an opportunity to figure out what's the most cost effective solution, whether it's to build a single new middle school uh, or to renovate two perhaps. And so really, this, you know, this initial stage is just about defining the need. They wanna know how old the the roof is, the windows are, they wanna know about code compliance, site issues, HVAC, electrical, all those things. And they put it all together and say, you know, these are meaty buildings and they wanna partner with us. Um, Mark, Mark makes a great point. I thought Mark framed it really well about, you know, how we have to think about what's the most uh, effective solution for us, both educationally, operationally, and in terms of, you know, potentially renovating or or rebuilding. But you don't have to go in at this stage. You don't have to know exactly what the outcome is. That will come from a feasibility study, a major, major feasibility study.
So this is our statement of interest to the state?
Correct.
Okay, so we're we're asking the state to take an interest in our situation.
Well said.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, this was a great presentation. Um, I appreciate if you could share with the school committee, um, you know, some of the questions or our concerns and and our hopes. But um, I guess we'll look forward to seeing you in the in the near future with the uh, statement of interest.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Good night. All right. So um, well, that was, that was good, uh, great stuff. I know a lot of us have been watching what's been going on and the school uh, committee meetings. So next we move to uh, an activity and use limitation authorization form. Tim Keane, our town engineer, uh, is present for for discussion, but we did receive a couple of templates and a property survey plan and drafted of uh, one seventy Dwight Road in Long Meadow. We are certain, um, you know, there was some um, asbestos contamination that wasn't airborne, but it was in the soil and we have contained it and capped it. And so that's the reason for this document. And so I will turn this over to uh, Tim Keane if he's here with us there.
Here, I'm here.
All right.
Can you hear me? All right, Tim Keane, town engineer, Long Meadow. Good evening, everyone.
Right. So
Just a bit of a background, this is um, the activity use limitation is basically a a form of a remediation. It's tied to the deed of the property. Which uh, restrictions on the land use. Things like what it could be in the future and also how if there's excavation or soil work that needs to be done. What uh, how it needs to be done and what oversight. Along with this filing, almost at the same time, a consultant, a licensed site professional uh, intends to file a permanent solution statement. That will be, those two documents when they go into Mass D E P uh, will be the endpoints for these kind of environmental response actions. There will be ongoing inspections that that have to happen, but as far as reporting on a biannual basis, uh, this this should be at D E P. I know the L S P has been in contact with Mass D E P and they uh, they're aware of the timeline and generally what the content of these documents is.
Okay. So uh, you know, the the first question I had, Tim, is, look at the diagram and it shows, you know, in a um, sort of crosshatched sections, two sections that are, you know, environmental cap area one and two. But I'm I'm not quite sure where the building sits in regards to those. And are those covered with blacktop or, you know?
Those are the, the building would be pretty much in the center of the property, right, right where that that de notation is. Like, oh, it's hard to read, but
Okay.
Two thirty-four dash three dash thirty-five A.
Yes.
The two crosshatched areas would be uh, right, right outside the fenced area on the west side, right before the detention, right aside the detention pond.
Okay. I I'd just like to just pull it up on my screen quickly, um, just so people at home would know exactly what we're talking about. But the um, as you said, this section here would be the center of the property. And that's, this is where the building is.
Correct.
The environmental cap uh, is this area here towards the the rear and um, so, and and is this a, this, this a fence and this is where that creek goes?
Correct.
Okay. So the creek isn't really on our property?
It, uh, in that area, it's about the point in trend that you know, that line right there is not necessarily the center line of the of the creek, but it's as you move more to the west, the 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 creek uh, gets further onto our town property.
Okay. All right, so it gets closer.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, all right. And and this location was chosen because it was far enough away from the creek and doesn't seem to interfere with any of the building?
I believe that is true. It was uh, that's the area where they consolidated some of the asbestos containing material and put a an engineered cap over it.
Okay. Now, this doesn't necessarily mean that any structures that would be built in other parts of the property, we wouldn't run into contamination, right?
That's correct. That's why the activity and use limitation is, I had several discussions with Weston and Sampson. But that is primarily the reason that the use limitation is designated for the entire property, not a portion of the property.
Okay. Does anyone else on the board have any questions for Tim, uh, Mark Gold?
And Tim, I I was just trying to get a sense of where that is relative to the, to the fueling ra- areas. The fueling area below that in this diagram that Tom is is showing is, you know, was It would be, it would be below it to the right a little bit. Okay, so this is way, way back in the, so do we have anything above this now, like our sand piles or? No, no. Are we allowed to put anything above it? No, it, you know, I conceivably we might put snow there, but that would, that would be it, it would uh, No, no, but could we put like a sand pile there, our our sand, you know, sand shed there so that, you know, nobody's gonna build anything there, but it becomes, if you will, useful land in the facility? We could, we could store material there. It would be a little trickier if we were to have to put a building there with foundation or or Okay. Sort of.
Okay, uh, any other questions? All right, well, I um, I looked at the document quite thoroughly because I, it looks like I'm gonna have to sign it. But it looks good and uh, I imagine it meets all the requirements of the state. And again, it protects um, any, if there was ever a future property owner or any future decisions made by the select board, that they would have that pretty much spelled out what we can and can't do, right?
Yes, exactly. Yep.
Yeah. All right, so um, I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments. You know, we did have a a motion on this.
Oh, with the new select board rules, this is just here tonight for just for information and discussion and it'll come back to your meeting on um, June seventh for a vote.
Okay, so we will, when we get that together, we will have our clerk make the motion. So um, all right, well, thank you for joining us, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So now we look at the um, the tax title custodian appointment. And I will turn this over to Paul Besterzak.
Uh, yes, with the, um, leaving Cheryl Cudnik as our treasurer collector back in December, we have not uh, appointed anyone um, to fulfill the position of tax title custodian. It historically has always been gi- given, the appointment given and to the town treasurer, town treasurer collector, I should say, uh, they do the most work um, beyond the tax titles with payment of taxes and so on and so forth. So with the new hiring of Erica Brunel as the new town treasurer and collector, uh, we're making a recommendation that she also be appointed as the tax title custodian through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, Mark Gold.
Yeah, we do this every year, Paul. Is there any reason we can't make a, you know, until unless changed kind of appointment?
Uh, off the top of my head, Mark, I'm not sure. I don't see why we couldn't, uh, but I do, you know, I I'm just not a hundred percent sure.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint uh, that the select board appoint town treasurer collector Erica Brunel, tax title custodian through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two and to be reviewed and to be renewed annually unless otherwise changed pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter sixty, section seventy-seven B.
All right. Well, that's pretty straightforward. Do we have a second question? Okay.
Second.
All right. Any further discussions? All right, hearing none. I'll say that we um, call for vote. Mike?
Mr. Lakisa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Brance?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right. Great. And we move now to um, the bond anticipation notes. So Paul, you can explain some of the magic you're doing here with these uh, anticipation notes.
We currently have a number of authorizations, uh, some relatively new, but some that we've been rolling over bans. There basically are five, five bans that we have outstanding currently. They total three hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. They are in the italics uh, type of print in the memos that I sent out. Uh, but just for the audience, we have a ban outstanding for Kingsbury uh, water mains of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, Farm Leah water mains of a hundred and four thousand, Branch Street Water, thirty-two thousand and some change, a sewer at Hozierville Road of forty-nine thousand and a Elmwood Siphon of forty-four thousand dollars. Um, we are looking to make some retirements of those outstanding amounts. Uh, we will fully be retiring Branch Street. But at the other, at the same time, um, we will not be fully retiring four of those authorizations. Um, in which case we need to keep the cash flow going. Um, and we need to borrow an additional one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars for a period of one year. Um, most of those uh, other four that I mentioned will be paid off in FY twenty-two. Um, the only one that goes beyond FY twenty-two or the only two that go beyond FY twenty-two are the two remaining water mains with Kingsbury and Farm Leah that go off into FY twenty-three according to the schedule that I prepared. Uh, the town treasurer went out, we received, we're bidding on these notes. Uh, we were fortunate enough to receive uh, nine bids on these on these notes. They are taken out for relatively a year, three hundred and fifty-nine days. The low bid came in at point three seven percent. And it is our recommendation that we uh, at at the select board award these bans to East Hampton Savings Bank, who is the low bidder, uh, for the hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars at a rate of point zero, I'm sorry, zero point three seven.
All right. Looks good. Any questions on on the uh, yes, Mark Gold?
And Paul, we started this, or you started this ban thing a bunch of years ago when we realized that short term borrowing was cheaper than long term borrowing and we could pay things off. I think bans required you to pay them off in less than seven years or something like that or?
It yes, it was changed. It's now less than ten years.
The the question comes up every time we do this, is it, is it still cheaper for us to do this? Clearly, you know, there's no closing costs and we only have one more year to go on most of these things. But do you take a look at, I assume you take a look at these and look at, as opposed to putting this as part, we're gonna be borrowing, I assume, for for more water projects or for other major capital projects. Does it continue to be cheaper to run ban? I mean, point three seven is pretty low, but.
Um, I I do believe it is cheaper. I think um, I'm anticipating, because we will be out to bond next month for uh, two point two million dollars, uh, those other highlighted projects on on that worksheet. Um, I am anticipating that we're gonna be borrowing basically for a ten year period at around somewhere under two percent, maybe about one point five percent. Um, and that's basically hedging long term or or hedging against how low the short term rates are 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 going to be in place. Um, so there's I I do look at both and and again, at this point in time, I'm just making the recommendation that we're gonna, let's continue with these short term notes on these projects, but we have four other projects, actually five other projects that we're gonna be going out to bond next month. And I just think it would behoove us to uh, take advantage of basically the interest, all the interest rates that are low. Um, you know, again, I I I'm assuming that ten year note that will be before you um, next month, again, about a one point five percent. But the the other thing that I look at, Mark, is um, how they fit into our our debt schedules. Um, I don't, I do not like to see volatility in our debt schedules, whether it's not only the tax rate. whether it's not only the tax rate, but whether it's against the water and sewer debt schedules. Um, and that, that bond that will be coming up in a month from now actually addresses not only taking advantage of the low term, I'm sorry, the low interest rates for, uh, I would say long-term, but a ten-year period, but also maintains a level of debt service going off into the near future.
We refinanced high school again, since we've already done it once.
We've, yeah, we cannot refinance the high school again. We've, we've, we, we actually took out two bonds, two, two large bonds for those. We refinanced each one of those doing, doing pretty well. But each time there's a, uh, a, a time period where you're not allowed to, uh, call those, uh, notes in. Um, I wish there were, but unfortunately there's, there's not. I know the last time we did very, very well. The time before that, we, we, we did good, but not as well as we did the last time, that's for sure.
Okay, well, thank you, Paul. So we need a motion to accept this, um, this, um, this.
I'll make a motion that we award East Hampton Savings Bank a three hundred and fifty-nine day bond anticipation note for one hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars at a rate of zero point three seven percent.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And then, uh, Mike Barbier, will you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morance?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Thank you. So the next thing on the agenda is the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. And we received, uh, two documents. One is the enterprise fund policy and the other are calculations about what the proposed rate should be. And I will turn it over to Paul. Uh, did you want to take, discuss the Stormwater Enterprise policy?
Well, I, 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 I just wanted to bring your, your attention to the Stormwater Policy. It was, um, about a year and a half ago that it was, um, uh, revised. Uh, and it was revised in, in essence to, uh, make the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, uh, one hundred percent funded by, uh, Stormwater fees, um, but not until we get to, uh, F Y two thousand and thirty-six. So over that fifteen-year period, um, when this was first started, we've been taking incremental steps as to, um, how much is going to be, how much of the, of the, uh, approved budget was going to be funded by taxation and how much was going to be funded, uh, through Stormwater fees. As an example, in F Y twenty-one, um, the amount of the tax subsidy that went towards the Stormwater budget was fifty-seven point five percent. And the amount of the Stormwater fees that funded the budget was forty-two point five percent. Um, maintaining that schedule of going forward and fully funding this by two thousand and thirty-six, there's about a four percent shift between, uh, the subsidy percentages and the Stormwater fee percentages. Uh, F Y twenty-two, again, maintaining that schedule, the tax subsidy would be fifty-three point three nine percent and the Stormwater fee would actually be forty-six point six one percent. The budget that was approved, uh, just yesterday, um, is a, a, a budget of a million dollar, a little over a million dollars, a million fifteen thousand, five forty-one. Um, and if we take those percentages based upon the policy that was approved, uh, we are going to come up with a storm rider, a stormwater rate of five dollars and fifty-five cents per month, which would equate to an annual cost of sixty-six dollars and sixty cents, uh, for each residential unit, uh, or one residential unit. All the residents in town are, are, are classified as, as one residential unit. So that would be the residential rate. Certain other properties have higher residential units and obviously they would be paying based upon the six, the sixty-six point six, sixty-six dollars and sixty cents a- annual rate. That again is, to me, it's, it's, it's a mathematical equation, um, based upon the policy that I put forward to you for the recommendation. For comparison purposes, again, you can see the F Y twenty-one budget. Um, that monthly fee was four dollars and forty-three cents. Again, as compared to the five dollars and fifty-five cents for the annual fee of fifty-three twenty versus sixty-six sixty. Uh, but again, um, this process maintains the consistency that was established in the policy that was voted by the select board back in January of two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Paul. And that, uh, the consistency was a, again, a four percent percent increase?
It, it, it equated to about a four percent increase in the fee annually, uh, from F Y twenty-one right through F Y two thousand and thirty-six.
Okay.
In order that by two thousand and thirty-six, that there be no general fund subsidy to the Stormwater, the, and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
Okay. We have any questions on these figures or any questions for Paul, Mark Gold?
Yeah, it's not a question on the figures. I think we've, you know, we, it is what we agreed to and they, they are, you know, moving along. As we said, Paul, my question is about abatements. Is there any allowance for abatements in here? Uh, you know, have we gotten any requests for abatements? Are there organizations, buildings that are putting in systems that require, uh, abatements? Cause I, you know, I, I, I just wonder how you handled that in, in this calculation.
Mark, I, I put it in about an eight percent allowance for abatements. There's a little note on the bottom, um, only because, you know, looking at, at the history of what we've, what we anticipated collecting versus what we collected, uh, there was about an eight percent shortfall. Uh, so, some of the abatements, um, when it comes to residential abatements, people have to apply for them, but they're good for five years. Um, if they, if they, uh, are eligible for certain property tax abatements, um, other than that, um, they would have to go through the D P W. If it was a commercial enterprise, they would have to go through the D P W. Um, if they were managing their own stormwater or something to that nature, uh, those abatements would go through the D, D P W. Uh, and off the top of my head, I could not recite a number of there have been any commercial abatements that have been granted. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions? Um, I, I don't know, Paul, is it possible? I mean, you seem, you're on top of so many numbers. But is there any, who's the highest payer? Is there a specific property that is a government property that?
Um, I guess the way to look at it, and I, I, I don't know the, I don't know exactly, but who has the most impervious surface?
Yes.
You might say that the shops are probably right up there. The high school probably gets a pretty big bill. Um, you know, the, the new medical center probably gets a pretty big bill because of the, uh, the parking lot size there. Although they, they have, you know, some, some of these places may have, again, I believe the new medical facility has a management of their, of their stormwater, as the shops may also, but, um, that's the only way that I can think of looking at it. I, I just, I don't have the, I don't have a listing of who the highest payer is off the top, you know, available.
Well, but your information was, was perfectly met my needs. Thank you. Any other questions on this? All right.
Question, some question in terms of the annual operating budget, Paul. Uh, the increases in that are due to?
We, the increases are that, the, the increases in that are mostly due to the, uh, capital projects that have been assumed by the, uh, by the, uh, Stormwater budget. I believe just looking at the, what we just did in the bond anticipation notes, uh, there are two projects that are coming online or will be coming online, uh, for Stormwater. That's the Ponside Culverts and Magnolia Terrace. But that's probably the biggest driving factor, um, are those capital projects.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I will say also this fiscal year though, the one other operational one was the cleaning of the storm drains. That, that had a pretty large increase also, if I recall correctly, um, in tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay. And so, um, is there any thing that would, um, make a smaller increase in the future? Or is it going to continue to be this sort of a jump?
Well, again, you, you have, you basically have set the, the formula. I believe that the only thing that's going to keep it from jumping this, this amount of money would be to keep the annual operating budget, um, you know, as low as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we set the Stormwater utility rate at, at five dollars and fifty-five cents per month for an E R, for, uh, equivalent residential unit of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, we have a second on there?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing done, uh, Mike Barbier, will you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morance?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right. Well, we've accomplished quite a bit tonight. Uh, thank you folks for tuning in. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a vote, uh, Mark Barbier.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morance?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, our next scheduled meeting is Monday, June seventh. The board may have another meeting on June second. Uh, we have some business we need to attend to. Good evening.
Just a reminder that town manager, uh, valuations are, are due in, so we can go through that in June.
They're due Wednesday, yeah? Thank you. All right. Good night, everyone.
All right, thank you.
All right.